My Watsons, my phone are about three minutes faster than these two and I've no idea why.
I got 8:59.
That's what I have, 8:59.
I've got nine.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will call a meeting of the Custer County Board of County Commissioners to order on Thursday, May the 4th, 2017 at 9:00 AM. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Katnick.
Here.
Commissioner Hood, here. Commissioner Prince.
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda? The agenda item being the discussion of the extension. Do we have a view of amendments?
No amendments for this morning.
No amendments.
I do have an attorney item, though.
Okay. I would like to add one more item to the amendment or to the agenda and then we have a quick discussion of where we are with that, with cattle guards.
Also, I did, we need to, that IG intergovernmental agreement about the weed control with Fremont County, I've reviewed that, so I'm ready to talk about that.
All right. Audience introduction, please.
Peggy Collins, rural.
Steve Conch, rural West Cliff.
Jennifer Berg, West, uh, West County.
Jackie Hubus.
Jane Spire, West Cliff.
Dave Post, West Cliff.
Okay. Uh, this time I'm going to pass on down the public comments because we've got, I've got to leave fairly shortly on for another appointment. Uh, I would like to move on. Do we have any amendments to approve? Okay, at this time, any commissioner items?
I have one, I'll make it very quickly. Chairman, I received a visitor yesterday, I spoke to, who was expressing concern and dismay about trash along, um, Harts Gravel Road from Wetmore up to, uh, Lunk Jenkins Loop. Um, he seems to feel that it's excessive and he thinks road and bridges are the cause of a lot of it. I told him that I would speak to you since you're the road and bridge guru and hopefully we can get something resolved with that.
This is from where?
From Wetmore up to Jenkins Loop. Harts Gravel Road.
Well, Harts Gravel is state highway, that's not county. Until we get to Rosita Road or we turn off there at McKenzie Corner.
I understand, but he felt that it was, um, excessive amount of trash. Is that something we need to bring up with C-Dot? Do we, who cleans the?
Oh, he wants us to go to C-Dot?
Yes.
Okay, I meant, he wanted us to, the county to take.
He asked us to go to C-Dot.
Excuse me, yes, sir. I voted.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't make it clear.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. I have nothing to you, Donna.
Uh, I do, I would just like to make a statement for those that are in the audience. It's my understanding that after our workshop, that was on Tuesday afternoon, that, um, there was a recording made by Mr. John Johnston that made it look like to the public that it was a recorded BOCC meeting. And I'd like our minutes to show that that was incorrect and that there are falsehoods out there with accusations being made. So I just want that on the record.
That the, um, the BOCCs. Workshop wasn't recorded?
The workshop wasn't recorded and that it seemed like, uh, that was what was being portrayed to our public, which is not true.
I guess I've got a very quick comment. We've reached the point, there's an awful lot of stuff going around through social media and I liken social media to your party line. Used to be if you heard the phone ring, I'd be running grab it so you hear whatever everybody else was doing. Uh, it was, you know, it was our rural version of gossip over the back fence. I caution you that just because it's on media doesn't mean it's true. Uh, I respect everyone's right to post what they want to on the media. I respect their right to express their opinions, but I also want to remind that, and as a matter of the record, that just because it's on Facebook doesn't make it a fact.
Abe Lincoln says it.
Pardon me?
Abe Lincoln says it is.
That's all right, Peggy. Uh, okay. Uh, this time we're gonna move into attorney items.
Yesterday, we had an executive session, two issues. One was a personnel matter, which was not related to the, the 4-H issue at all, so. But the other one, we did, we had an executive session on the 4-H issue, just to discuss possible legal options, but I'm happy to report, I don't think that right now, any legal action is gonna be necessary. I, I had to go to Pueblo yesterday anyway, so I used that occasion to go see if I could visit with Bill Nobles. Unfortunately, he was in his office, so he and I sat down and talked for about a half an hour. I think he was a little reluctant when I told him I was the attorney from Custer County. I figured he might be bad news, but I think we had a very cordial talk and I, I feel that we established a good rapport. Uh, you've all received an email message from Mr. Nobles, now and also one from Gene Glouacki, just for these folks, for those who don't quite understand, and I didn't understand the difference, but he runs the extension program itself, all the extension officers, Ms. Glouacki handles the 4-H end of it. Um, I told him the main concern was the, the testing, the weigh-in, the retinal scanning that was scheduled for this coming Saturday and the, the concern by all the 4-H families up here that perhaps they wouldn't be allowed to participate. He assured me that they would, um, which was a great relief, 'cause that buys us a little time. Um, and we talked about, I told him what our tentative plan was to hire, or not hire Beverly, but to contract with Beverly Gertz on an independent contractor basis for her to perform essentially the same duties she did for over 20 years for the county. He knows Beverly well, he knows her qualifications. He was very happy to hear that. He thought that would be a good temporary fix for the county to get the 4-H program, to have it continue. And, um, he couldn't speak to this. I asked whether there was any possibility, you know, any training could be waived. He said that would have to be up to Ms. Glouacki, but he thought at the most, it might require Beverly to go up to Fort Collins for a day or two to have some refresher training. Um, and I don't see that that would be a big problem if she is willing to do that as in terms of her contract, if that's what the final decision is. Um, but he was really happy to hear that somebody with Beverly's experience was willing to come in and take over while we're waiting to get the extension officer. He explained the problems, why there's such a long delay in getting a replacement for Robin Young and that's because, as was mentioned in the meeting yesterday, they're thinking that it's probably gonna be the first part of 2018 before we can get a new certified extension officer on board. He talked about the other positions he has to fill, uh, before he gets to our position. He said it's very difficult. The ones, the extension officers that are already in place don't have any inclination to move and to go to a different location, so they generally have to recruit from the outside. And when, he said, there isn't a lot of demand when people find out they're gonna be going to a rural county where the salary isn't that good. Um, in some counties, and not Custer County, but others, you know, the schools may not be that good, the other things, it's just hard to find somebody with the qualifications they want with a master's degree who's willing to come to this kind of an area of work. I told him about your discussions with Sarah Shield. I didn't, is Shields?
Shields.
Shields, excuse me, and it's Bill Nobles, also with an S on the end, I have to remember that. But I told him about Sarah's qualifications, her lifetime, you know, connection with the county, her involvement in 4-H over many, many years, and her willingness to step in as an interim, I think I used the term interim county agent, to do as many of the duties as she could, uh, that the extension agent would be doing. And he was very happy to hear that. In fact, he said that he would really like to see Sarah apply for the job on a permanent basis, 'cause she already has all the qualifications with the master's degree and all the experience. Um, whether she would be willing to do that, it would, something for another day, but I thought that he was very positive. I didn't get any sense that he's trying to sabotage or retaliate against this board for the action that you took concerning Robin Young. Uh, and he assured me several times that all of the 4-H families here can take their livestock to Pueblo, or I guess there's an alternative, taking them to Fremont County, I'm not sure where they all go, but, um, he thought that it would be a very quick fix to get somebody on board who could run the extension program, that, that formal suspension of 4-H activities could be lifted very soon, as soon as I think, if Beverly would be willing to go up there and do the training next week, we could probably get it lifted as soon as that's completed. So, I thought it was, I thought it was a good meeting and I think we can work together. Um, I think we need to contact Ms. Glouacki right away and either I can do that, or Commissioner Hood can do that, and find out how soon, and I guess check with Beverly first to be sure she wants to go up there and do the training, but I, I think a day or two, just learning what new programs may be in place and if anything has changed drastically in the six months or so since Beverly retired. Um, but it seems like a small thing to do in order to have this all ironed out and working, so that's where we're at on that.
So, um, I believe, according to the information Beverly gave me, is that she was going on a short vacation today.
Okay.
So let me do an outreach, um, to her. Uh, since the workshop, I know that she was contacted and there's confusion, because we were just presenting a plan.
Right.
So I need to clear up any issues that were misstated to her.
And I, unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Yes, there is.
I think, at least at this point, I don't think anything has to be discussed in executive session for a while, 'cause I'll be out in the open, so if folks wanna get the straight facts on it, they can certainly come to these meetings and listen.
They can.
I agree.
Um, what I would like to do, Clint, is after I do my outreach, not only to her, but to Sarah, because Sarah received an email, uh, congratulating her on her new job. So, I need to clear that up also, but I would like to sit with you and, uh, start contracts for both of them.
Okay.
To have that review. So what I would like to do now is, Brenda, I'd like to pass on this worksheet from the people that signed in at our workshop that wanted to be contacted so that they know one person that's not on here and I can make that phone call. Actually, Eileen, you sit on the, on the fair board, is to pass this on to, um, Diane Rose, so that all the families now understand that they can go and have this retinal testing.
I'd like to comment.
Do we want to summarize some kind of a statement on what you've just said and put on the, on the county website?
Uh, it probably would be a good idea, either that, or, did you get the, you also got the email from Ms. Glouacki as well?
Yes.
Okay. Because we could put both of those messages verbatim on the website.
We've got one somewhere.
Right.
Yep, that would be great. So there's no issues publicly. Thank you.
Sure, that they're both, you know, in agreement that.
Could you read that to us now?
You want me to read them?
Sure.
Um, I can read the one.
Is there private correspondence, or do you think it's acceptable?
No, I think that these can be read. Let me do.
Well, one, one went to the families again, so it's already out there.
Yes. But the one that I got from Mr. Noble, which is dated May 3rd yesterday, "Custer County 4-H Livestock Families, according to 4-H Online, you have enrolled in a livestock project. As a result of the suspension of the Custer County 4-H Program, your current 4-H status as a 4-H member is a 4-H member not in good standing. Your participation in the State Fair is contingent upon the county program resuming by that date. To resume the program in Custer County and your member in good standing status, a new staff person will need to be hired by Custer County for the CSU Extension Office. That person will also need to complete training on the CSU campus to effectively manage the 4-H program. CSU Extension will cover the cost of sending this person to campus for training. Once the event, those events have taken place, 4-H can resume in Custer County. Even though your 4-H status for State Fair is pending, we will allow you to bring your animal to weigh-in slash retinal scanning at one of the locations listed below, in case you become eligible to show them at State Fair. We are trying to preserve the possibility of your showing at State Fair, pending the outcome of the status of the Custer County 4-H program at that time. Should you wish to nominate an animal for State Fair, you must submit all required nomination forms and information to the State 4-H Office no later than June 1. The address to send the nomination cards to is listed below. Uh, please understand that the nomination does not ensure your eligibility to show at State Fair and that eligibility is contingent upon the status of the Custer County program at that time. Please let me know if you have any questions. Listed below are the two weigh-in dates. Pueblo County weigh-in slash retinal scan, Friday, May 5, lambs and goats at the Colorado State Fairgrounds Sheep and Swine Bar. The cost is $2 per animal. Please bring exact change. Also, bring your Custer County ear tag. Please arrive between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. Fremont County weigh-in slash retinal scan, Saturday, May 13th, 10:30 AM, lambs and goats, Fremont County Fairgrounds, 595 South 9th Street, Canyon City. The cost is $5 per head. For pigs, bring pictures of the right side and left side with legible ear tags in place. Thank you." This was actually written by Gene Glouacki, Director 4-H Youth Development, Colorado State University Extension. She sent it to Mr. Noble and Mr. Noble sent that on to me, so that is the letter.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask that you place the call to Gene and I'll do the outreach on the other side.
Okay.
Thank you.
He's gonna call, Gene?
He's gonna call, Gene.
Okay.
Just wanted to comment. Since this fiasco began, this is the best news I've heard. You did this on your own and I really appreciate you making that outreach for us. Thank you.
I'm really glad he was available. I was, I was fortuitous that I could text in his office and that he was willing to talk to me after he heard I was a lawyer.
I learned a long time ago, you don't tell people.
So I hope for those in the audience, yep, that are related, um, that have a concern, this is good news for today and just know that we're moving forward.
Did you ever hear from the President of CSU?
No.
Before you, well, I'm getting ahead of us, so I was excited I could talk to him. Uh, do we need to have another meeting Monday or some time for follow-up on where we are so we can keep pushing this thing?
Uh, I need.
Has momentum?
I need to sit with Clint next, so it's his time. Uh, we have double workshops tomorrow, so I don't know that we could do it that soon.
No, no, I'm thinking, not tomorrow, but maybe Monday if we needed to, or not.
I think he and I need to sit first.
Would we like to schedule one sometime next week? I'm just asking, I'm not saying we need to, but I wanna keep.
I would suggest, let's go ahead and schedule.
Just call a special one, or you wanna schedule?
Why don't we schedule it and that way, um, the audience could know what we're up, you know, what we're doing and in the event we, we are, it's not necessary, we could always cancel it. It's just my suggestion.
Um, Clint, what's your availability on Monday?
Um, I have a dark skies meeting at 3:30, but I'm available.
Done that, you're, you're clear?
On what day?
Monday, for, for he and I to work first?
Okay.
Okay. Um, how about at 1?
Want me to meet you here?
Yeah. Is that 1:00? Is that a meeting, or is that?
Between you and I.
Gotcha. Is that to work on?
That's our consultation.
Got it.
What does Thursday look like next week?
We, we have that training and I don't know what time, or not the assessment.
I know that we can't kill the whole day waiting for a two-hour meeting.
I know.
I would think, maybe say we're, let, let them know, you know, we're scheduling a 9:00 meeting if we have to change it, because we're gonna be tied up with that interview at 9 and we'll do it after, but I would like to, um, we can check with Charles and say, we have a, a Economic Development Focus Group that's taking place in town and starts Tuesday night. They meet all day Wednesday, they meet Thursday, and they meet Friday, and they've asked that the commissioners be available on Thursday for a couple hours and other, other.
Officials.
Town elected officials, I believe, are also included in that. But I don't know what time it's gonna be.
Right. Is, is Wednesday an option?
Uh, afternoon.
I'm good on Wednesday.
You're good on Wednesday? How about Wednesday afternoon, then?
Sounds good to me.
Wednesday work for you, Clint?
One, 1:00?
Um, let's do it, 1:00. I'm gonna jump in here just a little bit, but I, do any of you have any comments regarding the 4-H? Do you understand where we are? Peggy?
I would also like to thank Clint for taking that initiative. As you know, I've sent you an email yesterday suggesting just that, that you talk with Bill Nobles and don't wait to hear from the President.
This was in the works yesterday, but we didn't feel we could, until we knew what was gonna happen and we could go there.
He's the director.
Wonderful. I also wanna thank you for your response on some of the stuff on social media. Appreciate that.
No questions.
Yes?
So I found out yesterday that one of the 4-H clubs for sure is having a meeting on Sunday. Should they be having a meeting?
We need to have Clint discuss.
Where do you, where will they be having it?
It's Triple Cs. Is Troublazers still meeting too?
I don't know, I haven't heard.
At where?
Troublazers, um, Triple Cs, I think they need at the bowling alley.
Okay, uh, we'll need to check with, with.
Troublazers, here, in the basement.
We need to check with, uh, Donna, but as a conversation I had yesterday, she said if we had a meeting, a 4-H meeting in this building, that would be covered under our policy because they're volunteers. Now, we need to check some more to see, but that was the conversation yesterday.
But that's all fine and good, but Ms. Glouacki has put 4-H in suspension, so that has to be a direction that you need to have.
I'll talk to her. Hopefully I can get ahold of her this morning.
Okay.
We'll let you know as soon as we know.
I think our club, we were just gonna cancel a meeting for Tuesday, so.
Okay. But, um, if she allows that and insurance-wise we're covered and we can have it here, we'll put that word out for you.
And I, what time would that probably be, 1:00 or so?
Uh, yeah, it's usually at 1.
Okay, well, I will make myself available to come over if we have to. If we're gonna have it here, I'll make myself available to come over and, and let them in and, and stay till we're done.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, my kid is part of it, so.
Oh, so you'll be here?
Mm-hmm.
Well, would you mind, as our, that would be okay, wouldn't it?
I, wanna hear.
No, no, I'm just saying, if, if she says yes and we're gonna have a meeting and we have it in here from, from our, our county policy.
Yeah.
She's our representative and that would cover.
The other club that doesn't have a meeting here?
Pardon me?
The other club that has their meeting at the bowling alley? Tell them that they're gonna come here.
They, they have to come here. If this is a go, they would have to come here.
I mean, that's my club, so that's.
The only, here's where we are. The only thing we're, the only thing we're hung up on is insurance, 'cause see, you're not under.
Oh, and that's not, yeah.
Under CSU's insurance, right?
Right.
4-H insurance.
I mean, that's Sarah Shield's club is the other club.
And the only way we can cover you under insurance of any kind is if you were to have it here, under our county policy, it's on county, under county facilities.
We took one of our meetings in the annex.
Okay, so let, let us, let me hear from Clint and then I'll have that conversation.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, folks, I am going to, I'm, I guess we'll just postpone those two items I added to the agenda. Uh, I've got, um, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Commissioner Hood as I chair. I have an appointment that I have to go to. I waited two months for it and I can't skip it and go two months, more months down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And, that.
Hope it goes well.
I will excuse myself, the record will show that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'll be, if you need to call me, I'll have my cell phone on.
Okay.
Or text me.
Come on, this way, Bob.
Yo, it's great to be the old man, you move heaven and earth, so you get out the door. Okay, we'll see you, folks. Thank you. Good job.
Um, you said you were gonna post, um, those letters on the website?
Clint, what wants to do that?
Okay.
With the, with the statement.
I just wanna make, wanna make sure that I'm saying a correct thing in my.
Well, why don't I just compose something real quick to put, and then.
Okay.
Can you put it on the website, or does Chuck have to?
Chuck has to.
Okay, let me just compose something to go with that, just put it on there as soon as we're done here, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda is an executive session and, um, I asked Dave to be here. So Dave, it is your option whether you wanna have your discussion in an open format or in closed executive session. And this is pertaining. You don't want, you don't want to be in our executive session. Do you have a statement you would like to make? No statement whatsoever?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, this is a continuation of yesterday, for the record, okay? Um, so if you do not wanna participate, I'm still gonna call an executive session and I'm gonna ask you, if you would, to meet in Donna Hobby's office at 10:00.
Sure.
So if you don't wanna participate, we are going in executive session. And Brenda, can you please call Donna, 'cause she was gonna come up?
Do you have the furnished read for executive sessions?
Okay, where's mine? Out in the car.
I didn't bring mine.
Thanks.
'Cause I don't remember what the statute is.
Clint, just between you and me, huh, such great news. I've been fretting over this so much.
Well, that really was. I didn't know what to expect when I started talking to him.
We'll forget it all seven minutes ago.
Even though, you know, the report was that he was nasty to those women who called him, I got a feeling it was probably both ways.
And it's, uh, that's the first thing I think, well, I don't like when we had the conversations yesterday when that, you was said, it went both ways too. That's normally the case, but I'm so pleased to hear that.
Well, and that, I'd like.
Positive and moving forward.
Yeah, I'd like to take credit, I, you know, I beat him up until he agreed to do that, but that was already in the works, so.
No, but.
You took the initiative to, like.
On a good note, though.
I talk to you like you're daddy and I'm not, but.
No, but.
You took the initiative, you went and did it, you got results, what more can we ask?
He got a 180 turn.
Yes.
From the two people that had the conversation with what was said to them. So I think.
I get it. And I think also.
That your title behind you was a change of pace for him.
Yeah, and I think also, there's a bad taste with the three of us. So when a fresh set comes forward and says, not antagonistically, "Let's fix this, how can we do it?", that's the way these things get done, so I'm very, very pleased with this.
Well, and that's what I told him, you know, I, I do, I just wanna work out something here to get the 4-H back and that's what they want, they don't want.
Sure.
All right. That's the, that's the, okay. All right, so, before we can shut the door, I guess I need to say this to go into executive session. Um, I would like to make the motion to go into executive session citing, uh, CRS 24 dash Sith, that's 402, 4F, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. And also citing CRS. Do we need to do that? No. No, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Um, I would like to call for the motion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay. Approved, okay. Donna, if you could join us at the table?
Good morning, young lady.
Good morning.
Thank you for your help yesterday.
I'm there, you're welcome.
Miss Sunshine.
Hi. Sunshine. Ooh, your hands are cold.
Warm heart.
There you go.
All right, so, what has transpired since yesterday, was I placed the call at 1:53 to Dave Hobbie's home.
Dave Post.
I'm, I'm sorry, Dave Post. Looking at Donna Hobbie. There's too many Ds and Hs, including myself today. Okay, so, I left a mess...
Hold on, I gotta stop the recording, gee.
Okay, it's now 9:42, and I guess we need to entertain a motion to go back into session? We did that, so we're good, we're good to go. So, Clint, I'm going to ask you...
Is there something, I mean, Bob generally reads something first, I'm not sure if it's required or not.
Yeah, and I don't have it in the, I don't have it in the minutes, he just takes a statement, that it remained on...
If you'd like, I need to say it, if you'd like to delegate that.
You're used to saying it? Sure, I would delegate it.
I'd like to say for the regular division of press, okay.
And this is the thing at the bottom.
Okay, so I attest that I am the vice chairperson of Custer County Board of County Commissioners, and confirm that the decision remained on topic, or discussion remained on topic, and that no matters were adopted, and no actions or decisions were made.
As county attorney, I will certify that's correct, that the executive session was for the purpose of discussing a personnel issue. It was recorded as required by statute. No decisions were made, there was just a discussion about a course of direction regarding a particular employee.
Okay, thank you, Clint. Any other items need to be discussed? I want to thank you, Donna. Okay, then, whoop.
What about that intergovernmental agreement for the, with Fremont County for weed control? It's a standard thing we do each year, and I...
Right.
I looked over it, and if you want to approve it at this time, we can do that.
Okay. Did you get a chance to do it?
Yes, I read it, and I, I had no issues with it, and therefore, I would like to make a motion that we approve the latest intergovernmental agreement for weed control.
Between Fremont County?
With Fremont County.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. So, I think there were signatures due on that.
There are, and I'm hoping Kelly has, or me, Brenda has a copy of it.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Did you, did you email it to me?
It was emailed to me, that's how I got it. Well, Jay actually emailed it to me.
Who did?
Jay did.
I think I have it in my car, I think my computer's in the car.
And I don't recall seeing anything like that.
I'll email it to you, but when I...
Well, I think I have it here on...
Was it, what meeting was it on? Did we have it in our work packet?
Yeah. Initially, I think it was the last day of the month.
I was just going to say, maybe the 31st.
Yeah, I think it was the last day of the month, and Bob wanted to postpone it.
It was 28th?
Yeah.
I do not have that. So, I must not have received it.
Okay. I know you and I approved it, but you know what I'm going to say? Let's wait, because I think Bob wanted to talk to Gary.
Okay.
So, let's wait.
Okay.
To sign it...
It's fine.
Until the end of the month, when he knew Gary could be back up here.
Okay.
So, Brenda, we'll put that on the agenda.
On the end of the month?
Okay. I'd like to adjourn the meeting, unless you have anything else to say?
Something to say after we adjourn, so we can adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned.
When I talked to Bill Noble, he told me Robin had already applied.